Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
We would like to welcome you to a special board meeting of Orangeburg and Salley School District 5. This is truly overwhelming, to say the least.
Amen.
And I thank all who have participated in making sure that this cathedral thinking come to reality. When I say cathedral thinking, we started this process some years ago, understanding and knowing that we probably would not be the true benefactors of this. But it is here, and it is Orangeburg and Salley School District 5, new administrative office building. And we again thank everybody for the part they play. We would now have moments of silence by trustee Susan Gletton.
If you would stand with us, please, as we, um, I don't know, orient our new building towards this, but at this time, I would just like to say, because I know about this, I would just like for all of us, as we have our moment of silence, to remember our board secretary, Ms. Linder, and her joy with having a new grandbaby boy yesterday. And then to really get serious and remember what happened on Easter with the Sri Lankan people, and to remember that tragedy, and how really there are terrible things that happened in our country, but how blessed we are here. So if you would join me in a moment of silence. Amen, and thank you very much. And if you would join me now in the pledge, I pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, baby Cee.
Thank you, Ms. Gletton. We will now hear approval of agenda.
Um, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to ask for an amendment to the agenda. I would like to add, after our technology orientation by Mr. Hamm, I would like to add an action item, a financial action item, please, before a motion is made to adopt our agenda.
Okay. Could we hear?
Second.
Moving properly second, that after the technology orientation by Mr. Hamm, we hear action items, uh, action item, financial action item. All in favor of such motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? It is ordered, thank you, Ms. Gletton. Now, executive session, we will have personnel recommendations for executive session. Do we hear a motion to convene into executive session?
Move to approve. Second.
Moving properly second, that we move, approve for personnel recommendation to executive session, all in favor of saying motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? It is ordered, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To our audience, we should not be long, but if we are after forty-five minutes, feel free to walk into the building. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I'm requesting that you take action on the items four from the executive session regarding personnel as far as resignation as well as honorables.
Ms. Gletton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we accept the recommendation made to us for separation of professional staff.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we accept the recommendations of separation of professional staff, all in favor of such motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? It is ordered, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd further like to ask that we accept the recommendation that the employment of Employee A, an induction contract teacher, be non-renewed for the 2019-20 school year pursuant to Section 59, 2640 of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we accept the superintendent recommendation that employment of Employee A, an induction contract teacher, be non-renewed for the 2019-20 school year pursuant to 59 dash 26 dash 40 of the South Carolina Code of Law. All in favor of such motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? It is ordered, thank you.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we accept the recommendation that the employment of Employee B, an induction contract teacher, be non-renewed for the 2019-20 school year pursuant to Section 59, 2640 of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
Second.
Moving properly second, we accept the superintendent's recommendation that the employment of Employee B, an induction contract teacher, be non-renewed for the 2019-20 school year pursuant to 59 dash 26 dash 40 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. All in favor of such motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? Same sign, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we move to accept the recommendation that the employment of Employee C, an annual contract teacher, be non-renewed for the 2019-20 school year pursuant to Section 59, 2640 of the South Carolina Code of Laws.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that the employment of Employee C, an annual contract teacher, be non-renewed for 2019-20 school year pursuant to 59 dash 26 dash 40 of the South Carolina Code of Law. All in favor, say motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? Thank you, it is confirmed. Thank you, Ms. Gletton. Technology orientation, Mr. Eric Hamm.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
For the chair, members of the board. I wanted to take an opportunity, just since you were walking through the building, to talk a little bit about what you've seen today, and maybe a little bit of what you haven't seen that's available in this, in this new facility. Uh, I really wanted to start off with, when you came in the front door, um, inspired by the actions that we needed to do in all of our schools. The front door is a locking door. Uh, we disabled it so everyone could get in, but on a daily basis, it would be, we're able to lock that front door, uh, but allow the receptionists to actually check it within directly when we get to the front door. So that same system that we put in for all of our schools came out of what we put in this building originally, when we acquired, we were acquiring this. Uh, so that same iPhone system allows you to see the person who's on the outside, allows you to communicate with them, uh, even find out what their purpose is prior to coming inside, uh, to even make sure that they're in the right building. I can tell you while we were doing work in this building, a lot of people came by. I wanted to know who was here and what was going on, and all those sorts of things, but that door allows us to actually speak with them without opening the door. So when you have some employees who like to stay a little late, uh, from time to time, and this allows us to actually see without presenting who's actually in the building at that time, what's going on in the parking lot, uh, at that front door. Uh, those people who visit often will have a real badge, uh, but those people who are occasional visitors will actually get a badge that expires, uh, within twenty-four hours of their visiting the district office. So the interesting part about that, and one of the things that we like the most, is that with that badge, it allows us to keep track of who actually visited the district office in a digital format. Uh, the software, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go forward, will actually help us keep a log, so we want to reach back out to those people, you know, either for survey or to say, hey, did you get, accomplish what you needed to accomplish? How was your visit? Uh, we noticed you've been at the district office several times. Um, you know, some people say, well, I came by the district office, but, uh, didn't get a chance to speak with anybody. Well, did you log in, and we can actually see? Uh, so it helps us track, you know, the actual attendance of people coming in and visiting here at the district office. So that first part starts off by bringing our visitors in, and again, that badge system allows them to have access, but it only gives them access to the, to the entryway on the inside. Uh, there is a, the software that manages that lobby check-in part, as well as, I don't know if you saw it when you went into the superintendent's conference room or coming into this room, also there's a conference room, a small conference room across from the library, uh, excuse me, the elevator, that allows you to actually schedule utilization for a room. Now, these are the three rooms that we have actually set up, and I would tell you, we didn't spend any money on it to put those iPads out there, these were refurbished iPads that we had from our first iPad deployment, some of the minutes. Uh, so it didn't cost us any more money to put that out there. Uh, the software was already being utilized here in the building for check-in, so we just added a component to it that allows us to monitor the rooms. The reason that is important is, how many people actually come in to use this room? You know, board meetings happen once a month, maybe twice, uh, but the second half of this room, or this, the part where the audience is, now becomes the place where we can have larger meetings, uh, that, you know, departments can have, or cross department people for the district. So that iPad that's in that little casing outside of the rooms allow a person to either schedule it, so they don't have to necessarily call the administrative assistant to schedule it. She'll get an email, and he'll get an email, and they can verify that that room is available, and maybe it wasn't on the calendar. Now, when we get to a fully fledged calendar system, where we're booking all rooms on calendars, we can even, uh, any empty offices that we, Dr. Washington and I talked about, for folks who may not be in this building, but have to come over here, they can actually schedule an office space for the time that they're going to be here. Uh, if you could think about, um, maybe a transit worker from the other side of the calendar, and then he could come up here, and they have a meeting, but, you know, they want to get some work done, we could make sure that they have an office space that they can actually get in, get stuff done, without losing any productivity or time, because their office is on the other side of the calendar. So you'll see those iPads out there, and it's easy to add into that system, okay? Throughout this building, there is actually an intercom system and a sound system, all played through the same speakers. We can actually contact employees if something's going on in the building, in instance, if we had to do a lockdown on the building, or if there was a tornado drill, or an actual tornado, or any announcements that we need to make, uh, we need to close the building early, or something like that. Now, we didn't have that in the old district office, but now we can actually go, and it's down in that front reception area, but you can actually use an app to do it as well, but you can actually alert people in the building or make announcements. So announcements can be played, uh, we were going to play some music today, uh, I just didn't, uh, got running around with some other things, but, uh, it does, we can play music in halls. The speakers are also in people's offices, but those are zoned off, so we don't have to play music in somebody's office, we just play it softly in hall, but you can still actually make an announcement into offices directly. You can speak just to the first floor, or just to the second floor, or the combination, okay? Uh, so that's here for the employees, but also for the employees to be alert to what's actually going on. You could be in your office and kind of close the door, and nobody ever know anything, but with an announcement, we can simply say everything that needs to be said, okay? Um, all of the doors do have a badge check-in system, so if you're trying to make it around, uh, the badge check-in system that we put in that allows us to get into the schools, very similarly internally, we have those on doors that allow for people to not have to have a key. Uh, one of the strangest things that we run into, or at least environmental services runs into, is having to rekey a door if somebody lost the key. Uh, these badges are cheaper than a physical key, uh, so far as re-bagging them, and all we have to simply do is just simply deactivate the badge. If the person changes or reroute the badge to give them permissions to what they have access to, okay? So those of you who, I don't know if you've seen, uh, employees with badges and colored stripes, and that means what they have access to, okay?
Just saying, I was, Gletton.
I understand what you're saying about the badges of all the doors. What happens to the doors if the electricity were to go off?
So if the electricity goes off, those doors actually still work, and they still maintain what's there, because the programming is still there for them. Now, if we lose, or we, like, the fire alarm or something goes off, once that fire alarm is triggered, all of the doors release automatically. So there's no lock on the door anymore if the fire alarm goes off. So in a case of emergency, we don't, the doors do not maintain those locks, because you always have to be able to egress freely anyway. So if you need to get into a room, and if it's an emergency, you can.
So if the electricity were to go off, anybody that were to come into the building still could not go any further than that little front lobby space?
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
So you can cut the power. But the issue with that, for this building, four seconds after the power's lost, the generator is going to cut. Now, the reason why I say that's important is because, uh, in the server room downstairs in our data center, we actually have redundant power, as in the data center. Um, when we were doing the inspection, we had to cut power several times. All of the internet services for Orangeburg 5 currently come through this building right now. So if we go outside and cut power during the middle of the day, kids out at the school still have access, and teachers still have access. Uh, so that's not a problem. Um, we have a battery backup system that actually kicks in, like, instantaneously, so none of our equipment cuts off. Now, you'll see the lights go off, but about four seconds later, all the lights come on, the generator comes on, and that generator has, like, more than a week of juice to run. Uh, and it does come on, um, we do a weekly test with it, and it is checked weekly, so we know what's going on with that. So we don't worry about the power from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Is that was part of that inspection on...
Actually, we had to test the generator during the inspection, and ensure that power would be restored, and what happens when power is cut off. But when that power is cut off, um, on the outside, especially during the lawn part, that's when it opened, but when the generator is back on, that's for that, so.
And I was thinking that perhaps if the electricity were to go off, you could just walk in any door at any time, but that doesn't happen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And so the locks still work, you know, it's just you don't have a free egress into it. Okay? Now, a couple of other hidden things, really want to talk about those as much, um, when it comes to tech in the building, but, um, wasn't really expensive for us to put certain things in, but I mean, the wireless redundancy that's in here will allow us to have a full building of employees working with large meetings going on, without there being a burden on anything within the building. Uh, we do have beacons in the building that we've set up, and those beacons will actually help us once we do the third phase of installation, to allow a person to know where they are in the building. Not a big building, but, you know, a person for the first time could possibly get confused about where they're going, uh, and we can help them identify where they need to go. Okay? So there's numbers packed with stuff, mostly seen, but a lot of stuff that is, again, unseen. Nobody knows the, the, uh, power consumption on the back end, or the power backup that's on the back end, but it exists, if your power goes off, we'll, you'll notice. Any questions about any of those things that we got a chance to talk about? Will you allow me to talk about it?
Yes, sir.
Well, this is very, is what we're doing about the district, I feel a lot more secure than we have ever had been.
Absolutely.
So this is, that's weird.
Yeah, same camera system that we put in our schools, same camera system that's in here. These cameras are a morph of video, but surveillance cameras that we have in here, same system across the district, and it's compatible with what Orangeburg 4 has just installed. So in that thought, we're planning for, assuming that all of these systems are having to accomplish each other, and that's what we've been working on for the last two years.
Great.
When we get everything installed as planned, with our security-wise, how would this...
Yeah, it does increase the visibility, and it increases our ability to see what's going on. Uh, again, still would require somebody to actually look at it.
And I think that was one of the things that was part of legislation, I think, two years ago, that, um, the state would, I can't remember if the state would provide the cameras, uh, but we had to provide a person to monitor the cameras, and they were going to make that a mandatory, a mandatory something. Uh, so I was kind of glad that that didn't happen, because, uh, we did not have the necessary things to take care of that individual. I think, Mr. Brad McMillan, and Ms. Jenkins.
I just want to say, as you give all this information from Mr. Zimmerman, when you're out there recruiting, as an added value to our district, you can tell people that you're trying to recruit, listen, we are a secure district, and that's important for all of the employees, it's important for those to be a part of our district, to know you're coming to a place that you can work in an environment that's secure. That is accurate.
Good point. Mr. Jennings.
I'd just like to thank the superintendent and Mr. Hamm and Mr. Rivers, and continue for having the foresight to, uh, put this in place. Uh, we had a time in our history in this whole country, where, you know, security is of the utmost importance, and also, I was very impressed with the fact that our elementary school is going to be equipped properly. Uh, the incident that in Walten Bar really sends a strong message of how important a tool like this could be, and so we want to thank you, Mr. Rivers, and superintendent, everybody, for what you're doing, and continue to do, thank you.
Thank you. So the other piece with that is, uh, we recently equipped all the principals and assistant principals, um, with iPads similar to what you guys were equipped with last year. They, they actually can view the cameras while they're out and about through the school, uh, as well as the security person that's there. So they don't have to be confined to a specific location to actually see that, and that was very important for principals not to have to have to go back to the office just to do that, so they can see it mobile from there, from their device.
Ms. Begg.
I just want to say, I think it would be very important to make it known that these cameras exist. I think that the territory, from a districtal standpoint, the reason to bring, kid knows that you've got an eye on him, he's going to be much better than he was if he didn't know that, didn't think somebody was watching.
Absolutely. The kids know, uh, and they know when they're broke, and they're out, they know. Uh, yeah, I think some of the, some of the administrators will say, you know, hey, I saw you early this morning, you know, messing around with this other student, they're like, how do you know, oh, you saw the camera? So the kids are pretty familiar with it, and they know the schools that have it.
The public side of the rules.
Yeah, but even from, yeah, even from the public side, uh, that's one of the important things of having it here. Um, we didn't really have the coverage on Ellis Avenue, uh, we have coverage, there are some cameras that are on Ellis Avenue, um, but not, not to the extent that we have here. You can't, you can't make it into a room without being filmed, not in this building.
Ms. Gletton.
I'd like to ask, Mr. Hamm, is there any way, after what you said about whoever the individuals are that can, um, destroy a camera so that it can't record, or do something to it so that it won't work? Is, is there anything out there that will allow us to install a camera and have it covered so that it can't be destroyed, or is there any way to hide them so that they, and not that we would want to hide them, just to be hiding them, but so you can't get to it, so that I can't pick up something?
Yeah, um, some of our cameras actually have a protective dome on them, um, but I mean, if you want to break it, you can...
You can, okay.
Yeah, um, you want to have an unobstructed view for the camera, so like putting them inside of a cage, you know, especially like in gyms, you know, that's something that we try to do, but, I mean, you can't always, you know, protect them. We do the best job we can, even in the houses, to protect those cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Cash Green, as I, as I listen to, uh, Mr. Hamm speaking, and I, and I think about your walkthrough, uh, with your team, and the observation of classroom and content, did this too, or have you been, have you two been communicating about this being a tool that you can use to, to battle, or to follow through with, I see y'all laughing, so I guess you...
Yeah, but, we, we actually don't have cameras inside the classroom. Um, the cameras are on the hallways, uh, so throughout our classroom observations, that would be different, because we're not recording what's actually happening in the classroom. Uh, that would be a complete departure from, you know, most norms, and I'm not sure if that is attractive to, uh, teachers, that you record inside the classroom. There are some that are doing it for instructional purposes, but it's mostly focused on the instructor and not the student, if they do cameras in the classroom. It's more about the content and how it's being delivered, what's being delivered through or from the teacher, so we've looked at some of those. Uh, there's a grant that's out there for, um, teleconferencing, or actually having a teacher in one location teach at multiple locations, uh, that we'll actually be writing for this year, hopefully we can get some funding for it, um, because with this large calendar, being able to offer the same courses in a smaller area, or an area that has fewer teachers, might be more of a challenge, uh, so we're going to have to grant that would allow us to do that. But those cameras are typically focused in on the teachers, there's some that do focus in on kids, uh, but that would be on a limited basis, and that's not, uh, what the surveillance part is.
Yes, sir.
I just want to, yes, Mr. Paul O'Leary, about Mr. Rivers, we talked about it the last meeting, about, uh, having cameras in all of our elementary schools, and I think we are spot on with that, because they are the least to be able to defend themselves. So by having cameras in our elementary school, it gives them a definite positive advantage, so thank you for moving forward with that.
We, uh, I'd like to make a motion to increase our general fund budget in the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand and sixty dollars for the purchase of the security cameras in all of our elementary schools, as we've been talking about for the last few...
Second. Moving properly second, that we move to the general fund, three hundred and sixty-five thousand and sixty dollars for surveillance systems at our district schools, basically our elementary schools, all in favor of such motion, let me see by raising of your right hand. All opposed? It is confirmed, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And I'd like to thank the board for that action. We had a discussion a couple months ago, as we look at data that relate to, um, expulsion and suspension in our middle and high schools, and, uh, the data shows that we had just as many incidents in our elementary schools, and, uh, safety hazards as well. I think the, uh, securing of, of cameras in our elementary schools will also provide some form of safety and environmental enhancements for our students and our staff. So again, thank you, fellow board members, for, for that action. Mr., yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members, Superintendent Dr. Washington, I just want to add on to what Mr. Hamm had said, he did a man effaced a job. It's been another exciting day for Orangeburg District 5, in reference to, this morning we were able to install a guard shack in the front of Erno Wickerson High School.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, hanging kind of wide open, and, um, so, uh, we installed it this morning. It's the guard shack familiar to the ones like at Claflin University, South Carolina State University, whereas you're going to have to stop at that guard shack to get in, get further on campus. If you don't have your credentials, you're going to be turned around. Um, what we did, we rerouted the, uh, the lanes, whereas, you know, when you're coming in, you make the first left and go on around, well, now, you're going to get to the guard shack, if you can't proceed in the further, then you're going to have to make that turn and come back around. So once you get out there, you see how the signs have been moved, do not answer sign and a one-way sign, and, uh, it was staffed by, uh, officer during school hours, and, um, they were very excited out there, and of course, we were very excited, and, uh, you know, we, and with Dr. Washington even hauled them getting us done, and we just like to say, we thank you, we thank you, man, we thank you, sir. And again, uh, our team will work with me wonderful, we're going to install cameras inside the, um, guard shack, uh, he's going to be able to, or she's going to be able to see what's going on inside the school, as we're at an outside of the school, and, uh, you know, it will be equipped with telephone, uh, AC, heat, and all that good stuff. The only negative thing, and we can live with that, don't have a restroom, but that's fine, you know, we can live with that. They have to go to the restroom, somebody come out game with a leader. Other than that...
Thank you, sir.
...it will be, uh, it will be staffed, so we, we definitely get somebody who will begin it up next week, but as of right now, if you go look, it's a nice, pretty guard shack, and again, if you don't have a credential ID, I guess you see, uh, IT, so you can get that, and like I say, you're going to be allowed to further on campus if you don't have your credentials. And again, we was excited, I'd just like to say, I thank you, man, I thank you, sir.
So, Ms., yes, sir, Ms. Rivers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was leaving. I have a question. Without credentials, I'm a parent, and I need to come, if I get to the guard shack, how do you know that I am the parent of a child there, and I really do need to get in to talk with my child? And I have a call to school.
Well, uh, the guard shack will be able to make contact with the receptionist up front, to make sure that if, if I'm out of the room, and I'm coming to see my child, we're going to make sure that... to make sure that, you know, it's by the rivers and I'm coming to see, who have my child name, because if that don't connect, then of course, that's not going to happen. But of course, you got to be on the, on the, what you call it, the demographic to make sure that you, you can come see that.
So I, I would need to make sure that I would have my driver's license or something to identify.
Your ID, yes, ma'am. And like I say, if you don't have it, you'll be turned around, and I told them, if they have a problem with a parent, just call me, we will, I'll make sure it can take care of you.
Thank you.
And I want to say, if you don't have ID, ma'am, sir, I'm sorry, you can't enter the campus. And then we have our, that's all on campus too, if you have to go in and follow.
Is that going to hold true, even if you know me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm, if I don't, if I don't have the proper credentials, you're not going to let me in?
Well, if I bet you in, and you get inside, and the principal asks, if the principal know you, they gonna say how you got on inside the building without your ID, so we're going to make sure that you, anybody inside.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay? Any more questions?
Just, just wanted to add, eighty thousand dollars, that three hundred and sixty-five thousand is for perform software updates to the present system at North Middle Technology Center, Howard Clark, Nix, OW, Bedoune, Born, Brokehead Elementary, and the new district office. So, and again, I'd like to just say, thanks to all, because safety is a paramount, and we have to make sure, one of our selling points to the school district is that we are taken care of by employees, and when safety comes into play, then that is a very critical aspect of it. So thanks to you, Mr. Rivers, and thanks, Ms. Daphne, you're always telling other guy thanks.
If I could just make a comment or two, there are so many people in the district that had a hand in this process that I really want to do it right, so we will have a formal dedication and program ceremony in May when the plaque is here with the board members cutting the ribbon and acknowledging everyone that paid, played a part in this process. As you could see from your visit last week when the office of school facilities were here, we have to have people that really know how intricate details are, is what you're mentioning, where the sink is from the floor, how many inches. So there are a lot of people that have a hand in this, and I can't do it justice tonight, but we will get it right, and I want to be sure to acknowledge everyone appropriately when we get together for a formal dedication of this building.
Thank you.